I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order at our special time this evening at 7:00 PM. Thank you all for attending. For those who came at noon, I do apologize. Hope you haven't been waiting for it for the past seven hours. I do need to establish a -- or administer of an oath. Again, I'll always point out that we have established a quorum. All members are in attendance. So again, I do need to administer an oath for those who are planning on speaking at today's public input section or any other section during the Planning Commission today. All you have to do is say "I do" at the end of this oath. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission? Didn't seem very honest there.
I think enthusiastic.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure your enthusiasm when you talk will make it clear. We have no cases on the agenda today. We're moving forward to the why we held the special evening meeting is the signed ordinance recommendations. A wonderful director of development and code enforcement has put the recommendations from our past two task force committees into the city code. His name's John Paske, if you haven't got a chance to meet him. You should thank him for this. What I'm going to do, if most of you have not seen, maybe seen a little bit of this in the press, what is going on, but I'm going to read the new sections of the code. I'm not going to read the whole code. The signed regulations is one of our longest sections in Title 23, so I don't think anyone's interested in me reading all of it. But I will read up the new portions of the code, and then I'll open it up for public input. Other comments before I proceed?
One comment. Thank you for coming in the evening. All you citizens that have to be here.
Dinner will not be served. Here, you may go. Okay. I will try to -- there is copies, I think extra copies that were made of this that if everyone had a chance to pick one up, and try to follow through.
No page numbers.
The sections I'm reading are italicized. I might be able to pick up on that or -- we'll start. Section 230313, signed regulations. If you skip down to pass A, B, onto the next sheet, all the way down under section D1A, description of permanent signs, the addition of property management sign means a sign identifying the person, business, et cetera, responsible for that specific rental property. The other addition to the code, or actually, this would be a deduction from our code, would be under B, going to the next sheet, item three, real estate sign now would mean --
You can come over to that.
Of course. Thank you. Section three, under that, B3, would be real estate sign means a temporary sign advertising the sale, and we're taking out rental or lease of the premises or part of the premises on which the sign is displayed. So that would read now, real estate sign means a temporary sign advertising the sale of the premises or part of the premise on which the sign is displayed. In other words, we're drawing a distinction between a rental sign and a real estate sign. Another addition of code, five of that same section, is rental sign means a temporary sign identifying availability of a rental property. That's all the new additions on that sheet. No new sections on, under E or F or G.
I think G is the next one.
So under G, illumination of signs, again, we are reducing the code. Under G3, no eliminations of signs shall be permitted in R1 and R2 zones except for identification signs for subdivisions. These signs shall not have interior backlighting. The item stricken out of that would be apartment buildings or complexes would now no longer be included in that. Again, another reduction from the code, under three of item H, we're striking out apartment buildings or complexes. Now it would read identification signs, very similar to the one we just read before. Wanted identification, free standing sign not exceeding 15 square feet in a single face sign area and six feet in height indicating the name of the public facility or subdivision. Such signs shall not meet the, or shall meet the setback requirements 25 feet from the property line. Under the same section, H, we add item five. Rental property management signs. One combination rental property management sign per property may be placed on each building provided it meets the following requirements. This is one of the largest additions to the code. What maximum size of sign shall not be, or shall be, two square feet. Sign must be next to front door or visible from in front of the house on the first floor. Sign must come down after 45 days of an OU, Ohio University academic school year begins or no later than October 15th of that academic year. R1 zone only. Sign may remain up or be placed after October 15th if unit, not bedroom, is not yet rented for that current academic year or following academic year. R1 zone only. Sign must state when rental is available if up after October 15th. Again, R1 zone only. Sign must state when rental is available if after October 15th. R1 zone only. Sign must be removed two weeks after lease is signed. R1 zone only. No yard signs, no brochure boxes, any coloring, lettering, numbering, pictures are acceptable. Signs may not be neon, metallic, reflective, illuminated, moving, or flashing. Interior window signs are not permissible if there is a sign on the exterior of the property. Interior signs to meet same requirements as exterior. One sign per street front. No other form of rental or property management sign is permissible. If property is for sale and for rent, rental sign must comply with rental sign regulations. Each pause was basically another item. So that's one through 24, or 14, I'm sorry.
Nicholas.
Yes, John?
I think it's important that you ought to state that that's in R1s and R2 zones, that whole section you just read.
That particular section.
Everything we just added there is for R1s and R2 zones, yes.
Okay.
And then what you're about to go into is pretty much everything else throughout the study.
So section I, you're saying, is everything else?
Yes.
Okay. Well, yeah, that's, when they say R1 only, it is R2 then, I thought? Okay.
Correct. This section of the code that we just talked about, it would be standards for R1 and R2.
Okay.
So everything you just read was for R1 and R2, and then some of those only apply to R1.
Okay. Okay, there you go. All right, does that make sense to everyone? The section I was reading under H is for R1 and R2. So if the, if the line item does not include an R1 zone only, it meant that it was for both zones. If it has the R1 zone only, then it would just be applicable to the R1.
Correct.
Thank you, John. Okay. Section I, letter C, or section I, one, letter C, we're taking out all residential housing units.
Okay, and I is for every R3, B1, B2, B2D, B3, M zones?
Mm-hmm.
Start of I.
Yes, so all, pretty much most of the, such as educational zones, it'd be the rest of Athens. And so this is, falls under, again, the anything but R1 or R2 in Athens. So educational institutional building identification sign. In a building containing one or more offices, departments, an individual building identification sign for each educational institutional unit contained there and may be attached to the building or unit thereof. Again, this is really taking out the residential section of that item.
Can you, I wonder if EI needs to be added? I?
It probably does, since it does list it on H as projecting signs in R3, B1, B2, B3, E1, and M, so that's.
And then we just talked about the education institutional building.
Yeah, that's what, it's a good point.
But really, the EI zone is only the ridges for the part, so it's not like, but it probably should be in there, just the same.
Yeah, probably should be.
I think probably that was made after this, the original sign code, the sign ordinance was put together. And so the new zone, the EI zone, which is mostly ridges, is probably not inclusive of, but when you start by an education institutional building identification signs, they're up there as well.
Okay. So for people watching at home, I will read what section I does stand for, then, since we're, we're trying the two distinctions between an R1 and R2 zone versus the rest of Athens. Standards for signs in R3, B1, B2, B2D, B3, and M zones, and E1.
EI.
EI, I'm sorry. Educational or institutional. Unless otherwise permitted in this section, no off-site signs shall be permitted in the R3 multifamily residential and B1, B2, B2D business zones. Off-site signs shall be permitted in the B3 and M zones except in the following three B3 zone areas, centering on Carpenter Street, Stimson Avenue, on Richland Avenue in the vicinity of Dairy Lane, and on Richland Avenue in the vicinity of its intersection with US Route 33. So there are some exceptions to that. All right, if everybody's ready, we'll proceed to the main addition to this section. That would be under K of the same letter I. And this would be just property management signs. Remember, the one under R1 and R2 was rental slash property management signs. This would just be applicable to.
There is a strike through on J as well.
Oh, J, right above.
Okay.
All right, well, we'll get to that right now, then. Sorry. Thank you, John. Identification signs for striking through apartment buildings or complexes, subdivisions may be attached to buildings. So identifications for subdivisions may be attached to buildings. Under K is the property management sign addition. One property management sign and/or rental sign per property may be placed on each building provided it meets the following requirements. Letter one. Maximum size of sign shall be two square feet. Sign must be next to the front door, visible from in front of the house or on the first floor. Three, no yard signs. Four, no brochure boxes. Five, any coloring, lettering, number, pictures are acceptable. Six, signs may not be neon, metallic, reflective, illuminated, moving, or flashing. Seven, interior window signs are not permissible if there is a sign on the exterior of the property. Interior signs to meet same requirements as exterior. Eight, one sign per street front. Nine, no other form of rental or property management signage is permissible. Exceptions. A, in an R3 zone, a 15 square foot, or, yeah, feet, foot, should be foot.
Yep. Spell check, you know, if it's right.
If this is the only problem, we're going to be fine. In an R3 zone, a 15 square foot project or identification sign is permissible if the building, apartment, or complex meets the requirements of the R2 use group of the Ohio Basic Building Code, latest version, which includes four units or more and 16 bedrooms or more within one building or on one site. In a B1, B2, B3 zone, a 15 square foot project or identification sign is permissible if the building, apartment, or complex meets the requirements of R2 use group of the Ohio Basic Building Code, latest version, which includes four units or more and/or 16 bedrooms or more within one building or on one site. Content of the project or identification sign would be limited to the address, project name, phone number, and web address and/or, or I'm sorry, or current electronic media outlet, still meeting item. Six requirements. Project or identification sign must set back 10 feet in R3 zone.
I'd like to add, I just kind of threw the 10 feet in there. It's nothing that's ever been discussed. Figure midway through the front yard, set back, and we can discuss that further if we need to.
Okay.
And identification signs on the other projects are the same as the front, set back to 25 foot, and I don't know how you can do that if that's the front, set back of the building, so.
Right. Flexibility is key. All right, item 10, if property is for sale and for rent, rental sign must comply with rental sign regulations. 11, if a B2D zone, or in a B2D zone, placement of sign must be on front door or inside front door if glass. If access to rentals is on Core Street, Union Street, Washington Street, or State Street. Sign may be placed inside upper level window or in face of building if primary entrance is not on one of the four streets listed. Content required to list emergency phone number. All right, now we are back in the existing code. Next adjustment would be under, that looks like 4B. Yeah. 4B, we're taking out apartment buildings, so now it will list one identification, free standing sign not exceeding 15 square feet in single face sign area and six feet in height indicating the name of a PUD or subdivision shall be permitted. This falls under free standing signs. Under section F, we're also, we'll take out the whole item.
F was a repeating of B.
What?
For some reason, F was in there twice. It was duplication of B, so I just scratched the whole thing out.
We're also taking this opportunity to clean up the code.
Oh, B and F are the same, okay.
Yeah. Nice job, John. He also has to enforce it, so.
Twice.
Okay, moving along, under L is the next change, is L is under temporary signs, and we have a change under two, we're reducing the code. This is political or ideological signs. This came out of some past discussion within the Planning Commission with our law director. Political or ideological signs is what this item falls under, number two. Any political sign, circular banner, poster, handbill, pennant, or other similar sign of a temporary nature which by design is calling attention to an upcoming election may be placed in any zone. Signs posted under this provision may be placed on poles or lamps posts only with the written permission of the owner. Signs may be no larger than 350 square inches. What we take, suggest removing from the code is that they may be placed in a zones no longer, is this the stricken, strike through part, no longer than 30 days before an election. The person or group desiring to post such signs must post cash or surty bond in favor of the city for $100 guaranteeing the removal of the sign within five days following the election.
Nicholas, then while you're at it, we caught another one, the next step down on number three, right below that, real estate signs, again, rental or lease should be stricken through.
Okay.
Just duplicated, is that what you're saying?
No, I just, we missed it. I missed it.
We just, oh, I see, real, or lease or rental.
Real estate signs where it says temporary real estate free standing or wall signs may be permitted advertising the sale, rental, or lease, the words rental or lease should be stricken through.
I see, okay.
Again, this goes back to trying to draw a distinction between real estate signs and rental signs.
Right, as well as the last part of that where it says, or occupancy by a tenant.
Okay.
It's hard to get them all lined up.
Paul caught that one right before he sat down here.
Okay, section A under that, real estate signs, we also have removed a portion. In business and manufacturing zones other than the downtown business district, the size, the item that's removed is the size regulations governing the free standing signs shall apply to a real estate sign. Again, drawing that distinction. One free standing sign for, the addition is, I'm sorry. One free standing sign, or one free standing for sale, for lease, available now, build to suit, or other like sign shall be permitted per street front provided that such signs do not exceed 32 square feet in single face area and eight feet in height. B also added. Temporary wall signs advertising for sale, for lease, available now, build to suit, or other like sign shall comply with the current wall sign regulations for that zone. C, in residential, or, I'm sorry, this is existing now, the change would be in the sign size. So C is in residential zones, one real estate sign per street frontage shall be permitted providing that such signs do not exceed 6.2 square feet in single face sign area or 4.5 feet in height. Currently, it was five square feet in single face area and five feet in height. This change is based on pretty much what the current signs are out there in the market, so that no changes would have to be made, just we're adopting a standard that's already in place. Item five, an expiration date would be removed. Again, this probably has a little more to do with the political sign nature. The expiration date of a temporary sign, except real estate and political signs shall be, appear on the temporary sign. So that has been removed. We're almost there, folks. I think we achieved it other than going to the sort of bulk control items or chart. Nameplates are already existing, right, John? Is that how it works? So under nameplate, rental property management sign in R1 and 2, they're up to two, this is square foot, right? Yeah, square, maximum number of square feet allowed in sign face area. R1 and 2 is two, R3 is two, B1, two, B2, two feet as well. B2D, two feet, B3, two feet. Manufacturing, there's not a size limitation. And E1, we can't really enforce. I believe that we've covered all the.
Multifamily units down here, is that something new? Footnote number three.
Yeah, I see, okay. Three, footnote three, which would affect the following, under the same sign face area. Footnote three has been amended, public institutions, and the addition is, and multifamily units meeting size per zone requirements. So that would affect, anywhere you see the footnote three would be.
Yeah.
Just identification sign. Thank you.
Want this too?
Well, is there any comments by the commission before we get started underway with the public input?
The only thing I'd like to say is, thank you for the task force that worked on this, the citizens. I know it was a lot of work. It's been a long time, and we'll probably get someplace where we'd like to be, I hope.
Yeah, there's two, two task forces were put together, I think one about a year, year and a half ago, the other one beginning of the year, end of last year, so.
Three years.
Oh, three years.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Yeah. Well, we do appreciate, especially if task force members are in attendance. What I will do now is opening up to our public input. Commissioners will not speak during this time. I do have a list of people that have provided their names that, I'm assuming that you're planning to talk, there's no less than 10 that are planning on speaking. I do ask that you hold your comments to three to five minutes. I think with the small number of people, we have that time, so if you go to five, that's okay. We ask that you either come up to the podium or sit up at the front table here, they're, both areas are mic'd. Now you state your name and also the street that you live on. That's sufficient. And if you have questions for the commission, I mean, we'll try to answer them the best we can, but again, we're looking more for your public input at this time. So I'm going to go in order as it is on the list. Pat Murrell.
Hi. My name is Pat Murrell. I'm a broker at Athens Realty on 353 Richland Avenue. I'm also a resident of the City of Athens at 48 Grayan Drive on East Side. I heard about this through the article that was in the Athens Messenger, and as a real estate broker representing owners of rental property, I do not own any rental property in the City of Athens, nor does my company. I do, however, represent owners and manage property for them. My biggest concern is that I would be prohibited from putting a yard sign in a yard if I had a property for rent. And I don't see much difference in that yard sign from a for sale sign. My yard signs are metal signs with three sections. I take out the for sale section and put in a for rent section, and the appearance of the sign is really no different from putting a for sale sign in the yard. Those tend to be the most effective, and those are, I use those generally for rental properties that are located in non-traditional student areas. For instance, I have a townhouse on Meadow Lane that I manage. I get much more bang for the buck with a yard sign there than I do advertising in other ways. Most of my rentals that I manage in student areas, I don't put yard signs there because they disappear or they're vandalized. Most of those properties either are rented word of mouth or through advertising on the website. So it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me that a for sale sign is any different from a for rent sign with a different insert in it. I don't have signs attached to my buildings. If that would be the only way that we could advertise those, that would be quite an expense to have those signs manufactured and then have to take up and take down, which is sort of an unfended mandate. So I think a yard sign is a much simpler and temporary, much more temporary sign, and easier to remove than, than attaching something to a building.
I can speak to that. We did talk about that at these meetings, and the reason for the, on the building, the way we discussed is that the landlords thought that it did give an unfair advantage to realtors having a 6.2 square foot sign out where they can only have a two square foot sign on the building if it's a standard rental. So keep everything uniform. That was the resolution that we come up with.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, we have, again, I apologize if I incorrectly pronounce some of your names, and that's why I do ask you to state them when you come to the podium. Michelle Pape?
Pappy.
Pappy.
I'm not going to speak tonight, since I spoke at the last meeting.
Okay, I do remember, thank you, Michelle. And again, yeah, just as Michelle did, if you just put your name on here thinking, for those who are attendants, I think we did asterisk or not, so if you don't wish to speak, just say so, we won't hold that against you the next time you come around. Beverly Flanagan?
Beverly Flanagan, 132 North Lancaster, Athens. I just have a couple of comments, and I had raised these issues at our meetings. I don't know if they were ever resolved by the law director or someone else, but I thought I'd raise them again. Under section five, GH, H5, I guess it is, the pages aren't numbered, but maybe you can find it. It's the major new section that we worked on.
Okay.
In italics. Sign may remain up or placed, or be placed after October 15th if unit is not yet rented for that current academic year or following academic year. I had suggested that that go through a permit process, and I don't know if that was ever picked up on by John, so that someone who hasn't rented by that deadline would have to go to the code office and get permission to keep the sign up longer. That's one suggestion. The other issue was raised by Ben Lockman, and he isn't here tonight, so I'll raise it. Section 11 in that same Part 5. Interior window signs are not permissible if there is a sign on the exterior of the property. It was Ben's impression that the law cannot control interior window signs at all, which suggests that we should reverse the syntax of that sentence and say exterior signs are not permissible if interior signs are only present. If we have no control legally over interior signs, this sentence is meaningless. It's, you know, it's null and void, but I think that Pat Ling was going to be consulted on that, and I don't know if he was or not.
Yes, I just got the codified version done, and it will be forwarded to him to determine if that is, if we can leave it this way, or that, before it goes to council, that will have to be reviewed.
So we don't know yet?
We do not know yet.
Okay, again, the idea of reversing it was that we can control exterior signs if we can't control interior signs, and there's no point in stating the sentence as is. But a simple reversal would take care of that. It's no problem. And I think they're the only two issues I had right now, unless I think of something else later. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. David Ingram?
David Ingram, 120 Morris Avenue. I quite like what appears to be being done here. The only reservation I've got is it's not clear that within the R1 zones, the rental owners could put up a
David Ingram, 120 Morris Avenue. I quite like what appears to be being done here. The only reservation I've got is it's not clear that within the R1 zones, the rental owners could put up a sign if they choose to, continuously identifying their property with their name and contact information on, because that was certainly one thing that the East Side Association people were hoping would come out of this, that people would be continued to allow, to put up a sign that identified the owner of the property and how to contact them.
Yeah. Thank you, David. Sarah Green? I'm going to change the heart, right? Joanne Priestley?
Yeah.
Priestley, okay, thank you. Chris Hall? Thank you, Chris. June Saffranik?
June Saffranik, and I live at 34 Grosvenor Street. And I found it a very interesting thing to attend the meetings previous to this, where the signs were discussed, and I'll have to admit, I hadn't paid a lot of attention, except I had noticed some pretty poor-taste signs. And even in our own neighborhood, things didn't seem quite right at times. So, I became more aware and was looking around at the different areas and the type of signs that would be there for rental property. I also was in Los Angeles and Columbus and took note of the rental signs there in the neighborhoods. And we do live in a R1 neighborhood, and I think it's important to keep those neighborhoods looking as neat and tidy as possible. And I know in the meetings, and I remember even voting for this 2-square-foot sign, but I thought it was horribly big at the time, and I think I made some comment as to that. But we had to get on, and we weren't going to get anywhere just arguing with that. But as I looked at these other places, and as I, and even in our own neighborhood, that there are, and they cannot be over 1 square foot. And they get the information that is needed, and I appreciate the realtor who spoke to the fact that signs are often torn down, the larger ones, and the 2-square-foot signs are horribly tacky. Signs attached to a house are horribly tacky. And in Los Angeles, I saw none of that, and in Columbus, there were this 1-square-foot sign in the neighborhoods that we're talking where there's a combination of rental and residential people. And I think, I think we owe it to our city to keep it looking as nice as possible, and we need to keep these ugly signs down as much as possible. And so, I just really act for strong consideration in even reducing it. And it is not the case that the 2-square-foot signs are the convenient store-bought signs they may be, but it is because people have demanded it. Those 1-square-foot or smaller are just as easy, and if that's what the rentals have to have, then the storekeepers are going to get them in because they want to be the ones to sell them and not have them go someplace else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Demetrius Prokos?
May I approach to give you some documents?
Absolutely.
They're not all the same, so we can share. Just picture. That wasn't something I was to talk about today, but I had bring it during a roundtable meeting about our signs. They're not pictures that I took in Columbus. They speak for themselves. They're not 1-square-foot signs, and they're all over Columbus, from high street to side streets. And that is in Ohio State. None of them signs are 1-square-foot. So, that goes to--
Do you know what zone they were in, Demetrius?
No, I don't. They're in the residential zones.
They do look like the campus and around Ohio State.
Correct. Some of them were just a single resident homes, some of them were in a commercial, I mean, multi. Now, I have a question for you guys. Last time I, I'm for our constitution, and every time I see something like that, I mean, my hair is raising. And last time, we're talking about not being allowed to have signs inside the window facing out.
But that's still got to be ruled on by the law director. This is a codified form, and we'll have to send it up to him, and if he says it can't be done, then it can't be done, I mean. But what--
Okay. Well, now, we saying that the political sign can only be up for so long.
Yeah, that item is being--
Struck out.
Struck out.
Okay. Good. Also, the Supreme Court has mentioned that you cannot treat signs differently. You have to treat all signs in the same matter. And that was about the political signs that was saying, they were talking in the case City of Painesville. On that, they were talking about political signs that were treated different than other signs. And on that decision, the Supreme Court of Ohio made the statement that all signs need to be treated, temporary signs, I'm sorry, they need to be treated the same. So, I'm going back to my original request, that we need to look that for-rent signs should be treated the same as for-sale signs.
Okay, right now, the political signs are limited to 360 square inches. Are you saying that the for-sale signs and rental signs should be 360, 350 square inches, I think it is?
I don't think I talk about sizes.
Well, no, you want to treat signs all the same, political--
I'm just telling you what the law says, Mayor. I mean, I'm not a lawyer. I'll just point out to you guys, because we are part of the committee to make the signs, and I don't think we should make any signs against what the Supreme Court has decided. And they say, you know, but I'm sitting in this committee, and we deciding that the for-sale signs, because they're temporary, even if they're there for a couple of years, they can be that big. For-rent signs, we can only be a little bit bigger than this, in some areas. On other one, you can put, you can put four or five times the size if you are for-sale or you are for-rent. And that's not the same sizes. And they, because of our economy maybe, there are a lot for-sale signs that have been for-sale and been there maybe for a year or more. Then they stay under contract, they stay there for another three months, and then they say sold, and that stays for another few months after that. So, a lot of the for-sale signs, they are not as temporary as some of our for-rent signs. So, I just want you to consider that. Okay? And I believe, I still believe we need to treat all the signs, if it is for-sale or for-rent, the same.
Thank you, Demetrius, for your comments. That's all I have on the signage sheet. Was there anyone that came in later or earlier and has decided they'd like to speak? Now is your chance.
I did receive two emails, too, that I'd like to read.
Okay, John, go ahead.
Gene Amorall, is that how he says his last name? Submitted an email to me that says, "I have no idea what recommendations have been put forth thus far, but I do have an observation about signage. First of all, I think year-round signage should be required. Second, signage should be discreet and not unattractive. Third, it should indicate the name of the rental company and the company's phone number, perhaps just large enough to be legible from the street. In neighborhoods, a 7-by-14 sign should do. I'm not sure what company they represent, but the green and white signs I see on many buildings are ideal, is size and design. Rationale, as a resident of a mixed neighborhood, I want, Anna, I want to know which home or rentals and which our owner occupied, so I better know who my neighbors are, and if I have a complaint, in other words, their sidewalk is impassable due to snow and ice accumulation, I can contact them directly before I report them to the city. I have done this with a couple of rental companies, and the walks were cleared right away. That's it. Thanks, Gene Amorall, 187 North Congress." I would like to point out that the 7-by-14 signs, the green and white ones that he thinks are 7-by-14s, are 12-by-18. So, I think the conception of what the sign really is versus on the building, because of the distance, size of building, is a little misleading. Number 2, Rika Eland?
Rachel.
"I have lived across the street from a rental for at least eight years. They have posted signs on their fence, on their porch, in the yard, and none of it has ever been a problem for me. I suggest you spend your time controlling noise, litter, and drugs rather than micromanaging where a for-rent sign is posted. Respectfully, Ms. Christine Eland, Columbia Avenue."
What were the items again that were? Unfortunately, the planning commission only has limited purvey, so--
Yeah, well--
This is one. We can have some influence on, so--
The other three, we won't discuss here.
No drugs should not be taken. All right, thank you, John. Again, any other comments from those in attendance? What the commission will plan to do is, we'll be meeting on these items after we have a little bit more time to take your comments to heart and see how they gel with what was currently read out loud in the changes of the sign regulations, and try to determine if we can adopt some of your comments into the code and still keep the integrity of the changes that the two task forces have been, are trying to make. I think the key is that we are trying to find this consensus and to make some noticeable change when it comes to how the city regulates rental and real estate signs, so that it is, the quality of life is not impacted, but if it is going to be impacted in a positive way. So, I think at this point, I'd like to close discussion on the, our public input section, the sign regulations, unless there's any further comment by the commission.
Again, the, one of the things to go back is look at the first section of the sign regulations, 230313A, the intent of what the sign ordinance is trying to accomplish. That, of course, is the guidelines I would look at to review these at any possible time. And I won't read them out loud, they're there. I could let Nicholas read them out loud, but he's already done all those readings tonight.
Well, I mean, I'll second that. I mean, the intent is a very key part. I mean, this is what, you know, it's the sort of guideline through each of the regulations, we have to kind of go back, and does it work with what we're sort of given permission by the State of Ohio to do? You know, it's easier to just do it right way and not have to have it go back or be reviewed in the court of laws. If we can get it to match up with this and get it to work out right, we'll do that. So, do read that intent. Again, it is not to say that your comments aren't valid, it just might help you better understand where we're coming from as well.
And this is a lot of work. Thank you. I don't think everybody's going to get everything that they want, and I think that's obvious. But that's the point of a compromise, as well as a consensus. And thanks for doing all the work. As I say, three years of slogging through the sign ordinance, which is one of the longest sections in our code, in terms of one item.
Well, we tried to make it, it got a little longer and shorter at the same time, so--
Yes.
For those interested in the process, we'll probably be within, you know, a month or so, putting this to a vote if we make any modifications. And after, we do want to try to get Pat Lang to review it prior to going to city council, so that what we recommended won't have any changes by the law director. Once we make a recommendation to city council, and it is in their hands, they'll do a series of readings before it would actually go into law, and they may make changes there as well. So, all we can do is make recommendations to city council. In other words, if you do, here are, read in the paper in the next month or so that we have made a recommendation, it does not mean it's gone into law. All right?
I think public hearing is required for council, too.
Yeah, public hearing is definitely required for city council, thank you. So, you get one more, a few more opportunities. Every time it's read, you can always, I believe, have input. So, if that's it, I have no other communications. Any other items? Okay. We, adding the public input, if people are more than welcome to stay, it should be a relatively short rest of the way in planning commission, otherwise, you're free to go at any time. If there's no other communication, move to reports from the city planner and director of development and code enforcement. Paul or John, do you have any other items?
Just a few things. I've got copies of Tony Ferrian's planned unit development, final designs, and for the planning commission, for that planned unit development. Mr. Ferrian will be asking for a review on the June 1 meeting of the planning commission. Of course, if the planning commission decides to approve it, it will then go to the city council for final approval over the summer. We put public notice in, it should have been published in today's newspaper for 14 days prior to a planning commission hearing for planned unit development. Public Works and the remainder of the city staff will be reviewing it next week. We hope to have our staff report completed by next Friday. Other issues, just, I do have a copy of the commissioner's report for the five of you, the monthly APA or quarterly, as well as a document relating to wireless communications. That's our service safety director found this morning. I printed out copies, just on some of the things AT&amp;T is doing in order to eliminate the visual unappealing, or the problems with the aesthetics of wireless communications towers, some of the things we've been trying to work on with the wireless communications ordinance. We had a meeting with Councilwoman Chris Nysely's Bicycle and Pedestrian Subcommittee of her Transportation Committee on Council on Monday. It went really well. There were a few questions I had after the meeting, wondering if the planning commission was going to move forward at any point relating to the bicycle parking. So, maybe that is something we could review again in June at some point.
Yeah, I think we had discussed that, as, once we got past the sign regulations--
Right, right.
--that we're going to make the parking priority Bicycle and--
Right. So, if we could put that on the agenda for either June 1 or June 15, I think a few people would be pleased with that. Just a few other issues. I have been working very recently, and a lot of other people have been working and been involved with possibilities centered around the Armory. Two weeks ago, or about 10 or 12 days ago, Don Dispenza from Panetton Noel Architects, Bill Morgan and David Reiser from RVC Architects, and a structural engineer met, and myself, the four of us walked the building. The structural engineer was going to do a report on the conditions of the building and what we would need to do, short, mid, and long term, and the cost of getting that building repaired. That report should be coming momentarily, but I haven't seen it yet. I've also been, along the same lines, I've been, there's been a few students I've been working with in relation to historic preservation. I've also been discussing with the Ohio State Preservation Office, or Historic Preservation Office, on some details for what we'd want to do if we were to create a historic preservation ordinance of Athens City Code. So, I've been working with them on that. And this, this morning, I met with a OU student who's graduating this June, but she will be in Athens likely for the next year on a foreign scholarship or foreign study visa. And she has a lot of background in CAD work in relation to elevations, building elevations and architectural design. And so, she and I are going to try to work this summer possibly on doing an inventory of the entire Court Street area, do drawings of the existing and CAD drawings of the existing, and then try to find, based on historic standards with the Department of the Interior, recommended standards if we were to adopt a historic ordinance. Now, for her, she's doing this as an exercise, just to learn more about historic preservation, as well as her CAD skills, so that's her benefit. But if we move forward or something, we're going to try to craft something that is real world, rather than just something she would do in a, in a computer lab, so. John?
Great point. Thank you.
Last Tuesday evening, the integrated services case did go to the VZA for the substitution, and it was approved-- and it was approved by the BZA to basically be put on, on great, per your guys' recommendation. Other than that, I'm signing out.
You did your work. Thank you, John, for putting this together, and Paul helped out. We do appreciate both your guys' effort for this commission. Any questions for, for John?
John, you indicated that the one case regarding the fence was pulled when you alerted us to the different cases.
Yes, I did. I went ahead and pulled the case for the fence around the swimming pool and decided that was not a variance-type request, that was more of a safety issue, and I determined that they needed to have the fence. Then there was, I can go over all of them. Yes, the carport that was for Mr. Soul was approved, and the sign for Poser was tabled until next month, saying he could be present or send a letter.
Okay. All right. There's no questions?